I picked the order of the speakers tonight. I better stay here by a mic. I picked the order as the speakers tonight and I decided to start off our speech with Dr. Hafner. But before I turn it over to him, I'd just like to say in reviewing his resume and meeting with him, I picked out a quote from his resume and I want to read that to you. "Our college will not spend tomorrow looking back at yesterday's accomplishments. Our tomorrow's focused on the future of our students and our community." His leadership, both here at the State College and in the community, makes him the absolute right person to have on this panel. And I'm going to ask Dr. Hafner to talk about higher education, how he sees it being affected by a relationship with China, and we'll start right off. And I'll interrupt you when we're getting close to the end so that everyone gets a chance.
Again, I think tonight is a good opportunity. You want this one too, or both of them? Okay. Tonight is a good opportunity again to really begin to make an investment of our community in what can be something that I believe can have a major impact, not only on the higher education, but in the K through 12 system and certainly in the workforce for our region. And, you know, when I was growing up, certainly the Soviet Union was where we had to lay a lot of our knowledge base and try to get acquainted with. But since the falling of the Soviet Union, certainly China has come to the forefront. And I think that if we do not move forward in both educational opportunities and workforce opportunities with trade opportunities, exchange opportunities with China, we are really missing an opportunity for all of us to be competitive in the global marketplace. What we're trying to do here at State College of Florida is certainly lay the foundation for opportunities for our students, as I remarked earlier, from our collegiate school forward, to start really understanding why globalization is important in this marketplace. And by beginning in our collegiate school of teaching some Mandarin Chinese and preparing them for the future activities, we hope that we'll be ahead of the curve when it comes to placement for these individuals in the future economic opportunities. At the college, I think we need to continue to look at opportunities to recruit in international students, in particular from China, because again, it will give our students here at the locale a flavor of what the global marketplace is all about. Interactions and exchanges in face-to-face ways are invaluable, I believe, in setting the course of the future. And once we get a firm understanding of the culture of other nationalities, an opportunity to exchange ideas on a person-to-person basis, it will give a different perspective than just simply the great use of technology. We certainly have technology at our fingertips. We can interact anywhere in the world at any time on the spur of the moment. But that human relationship and that human opportunities to interact, I think, will play a valuable role, especially in setting forward our students that are of current age as they have to look at how we're going to respond to issues globally in the future. And so, we're going to continue to set the mark here, working with our students, trying to take on the opportunities. Fortunately for us, we've already had some visitors from Fudan University, one of the top universities in China, to come to our college here and see what we're doing and wanting to look at potentially even partnering in the area of health care. You know, there are so many different areas and variables of where we can go, whether it be health care or technology. But right now, health care seems to be one that we all can really embrace, and we certainly have some great opportunities in it. And it relates not only to our college, but to the fact that Meddi is a local company that makes some of these simulators that have an international marketplace, and they are interacting with China and other countries. And we need to piggyback off that, because it's not just one entity like a college interacting with a country, but it's really working with our local businesses. And how can we merge those together to work with educational opportunities and businesses in other countries, including China? So that's our commitment to looking at the globalization and believing that, once again, we wanted to jumpstart that initiative tonight by hosting this tremendous event. And I think that this will be a catapult for us as we move into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want to add to his comments before we move on? Right on target. Well, we're going to move right along quickly tonight, I can tell. The second speaker tonight is Dr. McGonigal.
McGonigal.
McGonigal. Dr. McGonigal was one of my students at one time. So, we go back a ways. But he's going to talk about actually public education and its role and where he sees it's going in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Elliott. I learned right away also Elliott has two Ts.
That was maybe if you remember that, right?
I never made that mistake again.
I would like to talk about that. And the question was specifically regarding Friedman's concept of globalization. And when you think about that, globalization 20 years ago was through journalism and things like that. Globalization today is really through our own personal devices and the internet. And what a change that's made. It's made this really one, the Earth is really one community now. So, the Earth is one community and all our students really are in this community together. And as they grow and mature, we've got to remind them of that. We have a strategic objective in our strategic plan at Vantage that we will participate in global outreach. And we believe global outreach starts right here in our community. We're doing that this Saturday and Sunday. I'll throw a commercial out there for Stuff the Bus. Every Publix in Manatee County is going to have teachers and students. We're going to collect 100,000 pounds of food for our food bank. So, we have partnerships with schools in Haiti, in Mexico, a number of other places where we like to provide them materials that we're no longer using, but it's better than what they have, which is nothing. So, the other piece of this is, we've actually are very proud of our level of technology as well. And what we've started doing four years ago is really building the infrastructure, building a platform. We now, two years ago, completed, we have 120 miles of fiber optics in the ground in Manatee County. All our schools except three are connected in this loop. And so, we have redundancy of this fiber network. And what that's done is really opened up the pipeline for us. When we opened up that fiber optic network, we increased our bandwidth by 10 times. So, we don't have any problems right now with bandwidth. The other thing we did three years ago, we've actually, all of our schools have wireless networks. So, we're completely wireless network. The one piece we're doing this year is we have a pilot at Southeast High School where we have a guest network, where students can use their own devices and actually have filtered access to the internet and use those in classrooms. And the rules of engagement were developed by students and teachers working together. The piece that I think I'm most excited about is really going to be the future, because another element of our strategic plan is a new strategy we have in technology and learning. And what the strategy is, is we're going to transform the learning environment to meet the needs of the learner. And we're going to use technology as a tool, a tool of engagement, that we can really just continue the enthusiasm of our students for learning in this 21st century. So, we both talk pretty fast, Lars.
I have one comment to make on that. I absolutely agree with you about the role that communication plays in today's business. Today, for example, I was on a conference call with an individual in Dubai, individual in China, individual in Bern, Switzerland, and somebody in Chicago. And that's just how we conduct business today. It's seamless. It's nothing like you saw 20 years ago.
And I wanted to add, we've also made a big investment in Chinese language as well. Last year, we had two teachers from China. This year, we have four teachers from China. We've been very fortunate to structure a partnership with the college board. And so, they pay a piece of the cost and we pay a piece of the board, a piece of the cost. Really been wonderful for us, because we have a pre-K through grade 12 international baccalaureate continuum. And so, now our students in those three schools and Braden River High School all have instruction in Mandarin Chinese, and we're very proud of that.
I think one thing that the community should be aware of is because of your excellent leadership in controlling the resources of the Manatee school system has put you at a lead in that role. And you have four years of recognition from a national board on that factor.
Thank you.
So, it really is there. All right, we're going to move right along. I have Mark Uy. He's the new president and CEO of Sarasota Economic Development Corporation. Let's see, Mark has quite a bit of experience up in the Tampa area, and he's worked in the international trade area too. Mark, the floor is yours. Go right on.
All right, thank you. Good evening.
Let me just give him the question, because they should know what I asked you to say. How has international investment found its way into Sarasota? And what are your plans to expand that in the future?
Well, I'm good to be with you. I'm honored to be part of the panel and to be part of this kind of an event. And I'll get to that in just a minute about why it's so important. But I am new to the area. I just came here from the Tampa area, been here about four months, and I've been spending a lot of time getting to know local companies and trying to get a pulse for this very issue, in fact. What are the international opportunities that we have for our local businesses? Let me start by sharing with you a couple of state numbers that are impressive. Did you know that one in five jobs in the state of Florida relate to either exporting or foreign direct investment? One in five, I mean, think about that. It's pretty startling, pretty amazing. So, when, you know, the education system is talking about how it's weaving into their curriculum, you know, five, 10 years ago, on nobody's radar screen. But these trends that we're here about today, it's already having a huge impact on our Florida economy. And the other thing that is very noteworthy is that in this difficult time of recession, those companies who have been committed to global business development are the ones that are growing. There's 55,000 companies in the state of Florida involved in exporting. That is the second most of any state in the country. So, 55,000 companies in the state of Florida are in the game. And here's why. Because over the past, since about 2003, their business activity, exporting activity, has grown 76 percent. So, during this tough time, the really resilient part of our economy in Florida has been in exporting. Our community, Sarasota-Manatee, about $650 million a year of exporting businesses is going on. So, it's a big part of our economy. You mentioned Meddi as a company. I had a chance to visit them. I've also had a chance to visit a company called Sun Hydraulics, which is based both in Manatee and Sarasota. Many of you may be familiar with them. They're a growing company. They're actually expanding both their facilities. One of the reasons is because of exporting to China. They have been working that market for quite some time thoughtfully, and it's again, one of the pieces of their business that is growing. But there's other examples of exporting and foreign direct investment in our community. There's a company called Oso. How many of you have heard of Oso? Japanese-owned company here in our community. They do adhesive bandages. You probably bought their products, because they control 85 percent of the private label brands in our country. So, Walgreens, Target, all of those stores that sell their own brand of it, those are made here in Sarasota. And that company is growing because of Japanese foreign direct investment into that company. 5D Composite is a neat story. Canadian investment coming into our community. Why did it happen? The president of the company was visiting here. He and his family, over many years, maybe like some of you who came to Sarasota or Manatee by visiting here over many years. And he got sick of getting back on the plane to head back to Canada one winter. And so, he's moved not his whole company, but a part of his company, to the Sarasota area, about 120 jobs. And again, great Canadian investment coming into our country. How does it happen? A lot of different ways. I like to think of economic development and what you can do as a community in three ways. One is organic, and that's why this is important. I think communities who want to be players in the world of international business development, they have to think globally. And so, having a forum like this is an example of that. What State College of Florida, what the Manatee school system, those kinds of initiatives are part of what it takes for communities to change the paradigm of what their communities are about. Communities who are building great communities, who are open to new ideas, new people, new cultures, and who are welcoming. You're going to get organic growth of international investment because of that. Then there's things we can do to facilitate, and that's where my organization fits in. We work very hard to try to help companies who aren't thinking about exporting, for example, to get in the game. And teach them, use a lot of facilitation to teach them how to do that and get them in the game. We work with Enterprise Florida. Enterprise Florida is sort of like my organization is for Sarasota, but for the whole state of Florida. And they have one of the strongest export assistance programs in the country. And they are helping companies all, every day, including companies here in Sarasota, to again, get into the exporting game and to help with foreign direct investment. And then the third thing, so we can do things organically, we can facilitate growth with existing, and then we can go get it. We can compete for it. There's a gentleman here, Chuck Steele, who's a tremendous wealth of knowledge on China. He was sharing with me earlier today that 23 percent of China's foreign direct investment is coming to the United States. Well, we need to go get it for our state and for our communities. And how do we do that? How do we get sophisticated about that? Not be passive, but become sophisticated about doing that. So, those are a few thoughts. And again, I'm honored to be part of the panel and honored to be part of the community.
Thank you, Mark, and welcome to Sarasota. Go ahead, jump in.
Just a couple of things to add to Mark's comments. I mentioned the rapid growth of US exports to China. Last year was $91 billion in US exports. What I didn't mention is 35 percent of that is small and medium-sized enterprises. So, it's not just the big multinationals that are exporting to China. So, about $30 billion of that is smaller companies. So, last year, 27,000 of these small companies exported to China. On the reverse side, in terms of Chinese investment into the US, I mentioned 2009, the Chinese invested $2 billion in the US. Last year was double, more than double, almost $5 billion invested by Chinese in the US. So, rapid pace of investment from a few years ago where there was virtually almost none. So, these Chinese companies are very inexperienced. They have no idea how to invest in the United States. And I would just make a couple of advertisements for the US government, because the federal government has a number of very new programs aimed to support both at the state and local level. For example, Secretary Clinton very recently announced a project program with the American Chamber in Shanghai, where they are, they have a program where Chinese companies that want to invest in the US go to AM Cham, and AM Cham will connect them with a locality in the US. So, I would just recommend, you may want to connect to that program. And there's also a lot of very new state-to-state, governor-to-governor programs that are being initiated, both through the Department of State and Department of Treasury. These are all very new, because a lot of this new money is just in the last couple of years.
Thank you. Our next panelist that's going to talk, I'm really, he's made it possible tonight. He's helped make it possible. He's one of the sponsors, and I want to thank him for that. Jim Eichen, James Eichen. James has extensive experience traveling, international traveling, and his focus is on procurement area. Jim's presently with PepsiCo. He's speaking as an individual tonight, and I want you to know that. He has some strong views he's going to share with us, and we're all looking forward to hearing from him. What role do you see China playing in the global consumer products market, Jim?
Thank you very much, Dr. Elliott. It's a pleasure being here today, and I'm happy that I was able to make this seminar possible today. As Dr. Elliott said, I've been traveling extensively for the last 20 years to China as well as 40 other countries, or 40-plus other countries. And I have a very simple message that I really want to deliver today, is that China's role in the consumer products market has changed dramatically. And this is something that is important to every one of us in this room, as well as in the US and the global economy. And I think a little bit of a very brief history lesson is probably something to give you. And it's my personal history, so this won't take too long. You're familiar with China. They have a very long history, so I won't go into that. But however, over the last 20 years, as I said, I've been traveling to China. And I traveled to China in the first place, because they were a tremendous supplier of capital goods as well as raw materials for my business. And they've proven to be a world leader and a very significant source of supply for many raw materials as well as capital goods for me. And that continues to today. So, that's very important, and it's very critical for us to be competitive in today's marketplace. But what I really want to talk about is how that's going to be preempted by their role as a consumer. As a consumer of products, as Mark was saying, that we're exporting here, that's a huge role, and it's not being recognized, in my mind, to the extent that it should. And what I mean by that is, just over the last 10 years, I started to see a consumer base or a rise of the middle class in China. And this was a slow start in 2001. But over the last five years, it's just been unbelievable. The middle class in China is a huge force. And if it continues at all at the same speed that it's going today, they will be the largest consumer product goods consumer, the largest customer in the world, well within our lifetimes. So, it's something that I think is very critical to us, huge opportunity for us. And it's, and I'm happy to hear the talk about the education system here recognizing the importance of having people here basically having a focus on the global business. I think that's just huge, and I really applaud the local community in having this type of seminar here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yancey Mullner. Yancey, Yancey, I, did I give Yancey a panel question? I asked Yancey, I said, you gave us the main speech, you sort of brought us to the crescendo of this group. And I've asked you to take this last few minutes and give any responses to tonight that you can give. We really appreciate that, Yancey.
I think probably people would be more interested in questions. I would just follow up on your point. It's sort of the theme of the emergence of China. I think something to take, put it in perspective is, it is shocking, but it shouldn't be shocking how quickly China has developed. In 1820, China's GDP was about 33 percent, or a third of global GDP. In 1950, it was 4 percent. So, when we talk about the V curve, 1950 was, so it went from one-third of global GDP to 1/20th. And so, naturally, it's going to reemerge to where it should be in the global economy with a billion people. Rightfully, it should be growing, and it's still nowhere near to where it should be. So, I think the expectations shouldn't be surprising. China is just really rightfully getting back to where it rightfully should be in the global economy.
At this point, we'll entertain questions from the audience, if anyone has a question. I think what we'll have to do is bring a mic around. Take one of the mics.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
at the doctoral level, those seats are being filled by foreign students. So, we have the system. I think what we have to focus on is the community. We have to engage ourselves. We have to become more proactive about what's happening. I'd let anyone else respond to that.
Well, I tell you, again, while I mentioned this in the opening, at State College of Florida, we recognize that the international side of things is very important to the future of our students and to our community. And therefore, just yesterday, we were able to get a baccalaureate degree approval for international trade, or international business and trade. We recognize that that's an important caveat for us to have, again, if we're going to teach our students the idea of globalization and the importance of trade. And certainly, we have a lot of marketplace here in this area with the airports and with the port locally, to really enhance the experience of what those students are going to get and the perspective. One of my dreams, and I'm, we're certainly going to do it with the collegiate school, and I'd love to see us do it potentially with our international business program now, is to really partner with another university in China to where students could simultaneously take a class together in the business field, so that when they're interacting through the use of technology, they're getting perspectives from both cultures and both countries. And therefore, I think greater ideas can come out of that than just learning one-dimensional or being talked about in one way of our way of learning. And I think that we're going to do that with other school sites with our collegiate school. But by doing that, what we're doing is we're involving a relationship and a partnership that can be expanded to greater exchanges and opportunities as well. But you're absolutely right, and this marketplace did not have an international business degree until yesterday. And so, now, moving this forward, again, this is a platform from which we can take off and do some exceptional things.
Other questions? If not, then I think our evening is concluded. Oh, we got one? Go ahead, nice and loud.
Yeah, I have a very basic question. It's about industrialization. I'm not too familiar with China, but I know that it's improving, and it's moving very fast because, really. Can you tell me just a little bit about the levels of industrialization that are taking place within China, especially in the more rural areas and the areas that are underdeveloped, let's say 10 years ago?
I do have some numbers.
We're turning this over to Nancy.
I should have some numbers on that, because, again, I think the perception is that all manufacturing has left the United States and is in China now. And I would just say that that's not correct. The US is still the largest manufacturing nation in the world, obviously closely followed Yeah, so we, in 2010, I think, the US had 1.7 trillion in manufacturing output, and China, 1.5 trillion. So, they're clearly, and probably by this year, they're probably equal to or surpassing China. Our friend up in the corner probably knows more in terms of where that manufacturing is. I would assume that it's still mostly in, near the Shanghai, Guangdong part of the region, where most of the manufacturing occurs. Part of the 12th five-year plan for China is to try to move some of that production west towards the poorer parts of the country. I think that's going to be one of the most difficult challenges, because infrastructure-wise, all the infrastructure is built up along the East Coast, not very dissimilar to the US. But it is a goal of the government, and like I said previously, usually when they have a goal, they follow through. So, there is enormous amount of infrastructure funding taking place in that region to be able to accommodate manufacturing that would happen in the future.
Once again, I can just speak from personal experience of traveling throughout China. And the rural areas that you're speaking specifically about, I can say that 15 years ago, when I would travel to those areas from a major city, it would take two days. Today, I can get to those rural areas in four to six hours. The interstates, the train systems, what used to be considered rural and isolated is no longer rural and isolated. And even though it's not industrialized, the farmers in those regions now, they're able to get their produce and their fruits into fresh fruit markets, and it's considerably raised the income of those people. So, there's, it might not be necessarily industrialization, but the rural areas are no longer strictly defined as rural areas in China anymore. And I think that's just a revolutionary situation that's occurred. And this has occurred only in the last five to six years.
I would also say definitions matter, and rural in China may mean something different than it is here. You know, in China, you have 100 cities with over a million people. So, yeah, the numbers are hard to quantify in China, because they're always so big.
Can I do a quick follow-up on that? Thank you. This is kind of the both questions, really. I just want to let the audience know how competitive we are in Manatee County Schools. I know how competitive Lars is, but we're competitive as well. Technology Student Associations, TSA, in Florida. The number-one high school chapter is Southeast High School. They're always number one or number two versus Braden River, and Lakewood Ranch slips into the top five continuously. Last year, our team from Southeast went to Singapore, Japan, and won the world championship in F1 auto racing. So, they engineer, they design their own car, they wind tunnel test it, they race it. They have to make business presentations to companies like PepsiCo to actually get the funding to go over. So, it's quite an endeavor, and we're only the second United States team ever to win the world championship. So, we are very proud of that.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'd like to close off the evening tonight, and I'd like to thank our panel, and especially like to thank the college, Dr. Hafner, for having us here tonight. I would like to thank all of you who have come here tonight. We have a big job to face, and we've got to keep that focused. Too often, we stop thinking globally, and we start looking very myobly at what we're doing and how we're doing it. And we have to appreciate the fact, one observation from just listening to this, and I can remember this, driving, they have a highway in China, just like US1, it runs down the whole east coast of highway. That infrastructure, that highway, is six lanes wide in places. I can read the signs, and I do not read Chinese, but there's, every road sign on that highway is written in pidgin English, that I can read the name of the town, I know where I am. It's just an unbelievable sight, and I don't know if we really have a feel for that. We have a long way to go, but it's a challenge, and I think we can face that challenge and meet it. Again, thank you, panel. Thank you, audience. Thank you. (applause)[1757.21]